No citizens comment at this time?
That's correct.
Moving on to item number four, approval of the minutes. Do we have any corrections or additions to the minutes as they were handed out?
Move to approve the minutes.
Have a motion or have a second? A motion and a second to approve the minutes. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Item five, old business, annexation zoning plan of service. Item number one, Woodpoint subdivision, staff comments.
This is a request that you looked at last month. It is a request for annexation of two parcels of land totaling 22 acres. It is requested to be zoned PRD with that annexation request. It is adjacent to the Woodmont PRD and then some of the rest of the property in the county is zoned RM. Land use plan would support a medium density residential development in this area. The proposed PRD has been tweaked a little bit from what's in your packet and in your comments. We did receive revised plans yesterday and it is now actually 97 single-family lots instead of 99. When they corrected the right-of-way to be 50 feet instead of 40 feet, which was discussed last month, they had to tweak the layout a little bit and it did reduce the number of lots by two. It does lie within CUD's boundary for water. The town would be providing all other services. The sewer on this, this is part of the reason for the deferral was the discussion with the adjoining parcel of land, which is where the existing sewer pump station is and this development would be served by that same pump station. And there was this and the plats that are on the next items on the agenda were deferred because of that. The plaque that for that easement would be shown has been withdrawn at this time. We're still working out the exact location of that. Our utilities department is working with them on this as well to ensure that that does happen. And working with this developer and the other developer too. I think it's something that will happen. It's just the exact location and timing is the only thing that's got to be worked out at this point. Number six has been corrected with regard to the right-of-way. And there is a note in part of the description of the development that the town would be handling the solid waste and that does need to be updated because the town does not do that. They do still need to address that within their booklet.
And what exactly does that mean? The town does not handle solid waste?
We don't pick up trash. So it's a private handler. So on page 15 of their booklet, it says solid waste will be handled via the town of Smyrna and we don't. We don't do that.
Well, I know, but we never have.
We never have.
I had to say never send it on the...
Right. Well, and that was just as part of their whole development description and all. That was one of the things they talked about, the different utilities and buildings and different things. And that was one of the things they had on there. We just wanted to clarify on that.
Okay.
It would be connecting from a roadway standpoint. It does connect to Woodmont, Maple Creek Drive, Stubb Streets in three different directions coming out of that as well, two to the east and one to the south. I think that's all that I have.
Do they show square footage and...
They do. Yeah, page 15, 1,600 square feet living area is the minimum. Two-car garage. And then page, the next pages 16 and 17 talk about them a little bit more in detail as far as the elevations and that sort of thing.
You okay with the elevations, the parking and all that stuff with it?
Right, they are setting the garages back an extra five feet. So that gives, it does get you 25 feet. There is a two-car parking pad in addition to the two-car garage on every lot. So they are addressing that as well.
Kevin, 16 and 17, they're proposing 75% vinyl siding on the front. All vinyl siding on the sides and the rear. We hadn't been doing that.
No, and we had recommended to do something similar to what is in Woodmont and they have requested to be approved like, as they, this is their request is that you approve it like this. And so we did recommend that they be to do something that is consistent with the Woodmont development to them. But they did request, as this is their, it's a separate development distinct from Woodmont in that regard. They did request the...
But that's not part of your comments?
It's not part of these comments.
For the exteriors?
Right. That was our, we did recommend that to them though. It probably was in last few months' comments. Probably should have carried it over because that was our recommendation.
Question regarding the easement. Do we know when that might be rectified?
I don't know the timing.
You feel assured it will? We don't want another pump station, do we?
We don't. And I know that the, I've talked to people, I guess, on both sides of the development and they're both, or the folks where the easement would be are not, I mean, they're here tonight. They have items on the agenda as well. They're not opposed to it, that it was a timing thing for them as to when it would be constructed. I think is their more concern right now. They have some commitments on some lots that they had, they needed to bring online for selling.
Is there any way we can get some assurances of that?
Like I said, they're here tonight and they can speak to that. Because that's kind of between the two of them, so.
Please give your name and address, please.
Terry Rastness in 2000 Mallory Lane, Franklin, Tennessee.
Okay.
Royce Stokes, 1100 Rock Church Road in Dixon, Tennessee.
Okay.
We have agreements that have gone back and forth. We've drawn up the agreement and we've sent it to Royce and they are in the process of going through that. And should, we hope have comments back tomorrow or Monday maybe.
Tell them who you are. You're Terry.
I'm with BRS. We're doing the Woodpoint subdivision.
Okay, and who are you?
Represent Woodmont Development for the developer.
These are the two entities that...
Yes, these are the two entities.
We have both sides in front of us.
Absolutely, sir. So both sides, we are working through an agreement. We have verbally and we're working, our attorneys have the, we're all so busy that our attorneys are so busy they can't get to our drafts to get it finalized and that's all we lack. An agreement in principle we've reached. The routing, I think we went with both of utilities and also with Public Works and I think they're in agreement.
Did we have that before? That's my concern.
No, sir, no, sir.
We didn't have any...
We changed the routing.
Okay.
We changed the routing and it became, the problem with the routing, sir, was that it was going to create a regional detention pond because we had to move the pond. And with this new routing, we won't have to move the pond and it seems to work better for both parties.
Can we address it in our plan of service? The approval is, and the plan of service involves using, does not have a separate lift station? Can it be addressed that way?
Well, I mean, we'd already had it. It's already spelled out that they would be provided, basically that the property owner would extend the mains to the property, would extend, we would be providing the sewer but upon the extension of those mains by them. So I mean, I think we're okay covering the plan of service already for that.
So everybody has the understanding that our approval is with the understanding that this is going to happen with this one pump station and we're not building another?
Right.
And that's y'all's understanding too?
Yes, sir.
You working out the details?
It's just a matter of time and attorneys are so busy they can't get it worked out. I mean, they can get it worked out, we just can't get them to...
Basically, this is going to take two months for the...
We generate counsel.
And which should be ample time to have that worked out before the second reading on the rezoning anyway.
Yeah, you'll be second Tuesday, January of the year.
We hope to have them before then, won't you?
We hope to have the agreement worked out definitely before then, within the next week or two.
I can't speak for the council, but I'm, there are two members here and I assume they're going to be anxious to see that before the second reading.
Sure, you're right. We understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's talk about the vinyl then. Did you have a, you questioned it. Do you have any other comments, Trey?
Yeah, I think it needs to be consistent with what we've been doing in the subdivisions that are in front.
What exists between this new subdivision and the one that's, that butts right up against in Woodmont? As far as, is there any trees or borders or anything that separates it? Or they just look like one passing right into the other?
There will be enough, I mean, there's going to be a new signage and some things like that where you come into this with landscaping and new signage. But I don't think there's any proposed any type of buffer or anything between two sets of houses or anything like that.
Because Woodmont has significantly better specifications on the external of their buildings.
I mean, there's not going to be a clear delineation other than that signage, as you would say.
And these are five-foot setbacks, right?
Correct.
Have we addressed any fire issues or anything like that? Where normally we look at a little bit of a hardy cement-type product and the placement of the heating and air units.
Yeah, because you would need them. We typically have, especially if there's any easements, drainage easements or sewer easements on the side lot line especially, we wouldn't allow them to put their heating and air units there at all.
But I think when we've had the five-foot setbacks we've had put in there that we want those units on the back and not between the two units too, haven't we?
Yes.
I think, I know we've talked about them. I don't know if we've done it every time, but we certainly have talked about it.
Yeah, I know we've required it, but I can't remember where.
Right.
Just because, you know...
See what we did there, maybe consider you?
Is there or maybe Blakeney or one of those? Yeah, I can't remember exactly. And that's certainly something we could, we could add that here as well.
I think one thing that we've consistently done when we've looked at a PRD, when we're looking at the reduced setbacks, is that we have required cement fiber board and... I can just...
Stone brick.
Yeah, exactly. But especially on the side and rear setbacks. I mean, because we're looking at five feet side and, what did I see, rear? Five feet on corner lots, 10 feet on interior lots. So that's putting a lot of homes really close together. I can just tell you, in my industry, I've seen where a fire's broken out in a vinyl home that's had the smaller setbacks and it doesn't just affect that home, it affects homes on either side of it and sometimes behind it. So especially when we're looking at a PRD, I think we've been very consistent about the cement fiber board, especially on the sides. Yeah. And we've been also consistent as far as adjacent neighborhoods. I can think of the Preserve next to Arlington. You know, we had brick there and we required, instead of vinyl, we required cement fiber board that the developer did.
I think that's where we address the high-back limits also.
Yes, sir.
Rob Moulson, SEC. I'm here back for my client, Mr. Rastness. We are, we're willing to, if this is a discussion on the vinyl side, we're willing to move that to a all cementaceous-type product on all four elevations. More or less, we can do the hardy on the sides and rear. You know, we can do a mixture of brick and stone on the front with a hardy mixture on that side. So we're willing to, you know, if vinyl's an issue on that side from aesthetics and also fire protection, we're willing to move towards doing an all cementaceous-type product on the elevations of the home and, you know, being more of the hardy board on the side and rears. And the front can be a mixture of all the different types of cementaceous products on that side. And we'll also put in the book on that regards to the HVAC units. We'll move those to the rear of the homes on that side. So from the fire protection standpoint too, we're opening up that avenue between the homes on that side as being a clear space on that side to go along with that as well.
Pretty well settle that then. Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
So we can make that part of our comments then?
We'll have both of those be as far as you're recommended with these conditions and those will be two of the conditions.
Okay, what else we have?
I've got a simple question about the driveways. By the garages being setback additional five feet, does that allow enough room for like four cars to help eliminate some parking on the street?
Yeah, with two in the garage and two in the, at least it gets you two in the driveway easier. 20-foot setback, you might could do that, but you're, a lot of times with the longer vehicle, if you have a larger pickup or something like that, it extends at least, it might be off the road, but it's going to be extended over that sidewalk, which makes the sidewalk not usable.
It gets them off the sidewalk and out and in the room for two.
Hopefully off the street too.
And the extra five feet does matter on that. And so you would, and also aesthetically, the house, the garage is a little bit recessed and it looks a little better too, in my opinion.
Okay, what else we got? Do I have, we handle one motion for annexation and...
The annexation and the PRD with those conditions that we talked about.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments and all added comments through these conversations.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried.
That's a good catch, Trey. Thank you. All right. Under old business B, final plats, first one has been withdrawn.
That's correct.
Moving on to item number two, Woodmont Phase Six, Section C, staff comments.
This is, this is part of the townhome part of the development. This particular section is 4.99 acres, 18 units proposed. We had four comments. They're all pretty well standard comments that would still need to be addressed. But everything else, all of our other comments have been addressed and is, we'd recommend this to you is consistent with the preliminary plat and it is compliant with our regulations.
Any questions for the staff? We have a motion.
I make a motion, we approve.
We have a second. Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. Item number three under final plats, Woodmont Phase Six, Section D, staff comments.
Yeah, this is basically the last, or not the last phase now since we will be seeing B. But this is Phase Six, Section D. Again, it's part of the Woodmont PRD. We had some standard comments there, but we don't have, everything else has been addressed and we would recommend this to you.
Questions, comments? Motion.
Motion to approve with staff comments?
We have a second.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose, motion carried. New business, annexation zoning plan of service, Glenn Farms. Staff comments?
This is an annexation with, it's two things. It's a rezoning request partially because part of the property is already within the town. It's currently zoned R3. And then there is a second tract of land that is not within the town that has been requested for annexation as well as being zoned PRD. It's all part of the same development plan. So it's two tracts together, 190.5 acres. The, I guess, the park that's in town is currently zoned R3 to be rezoned to PRD and then the annexation with the PRD. The surrounding zoning is a mix of R3 and R1 in town and then RM in Rutherford County. Land use plan would support a low-density residential development in this area. This proposed PRD is for 510 units total, 115 of those being townhomes and 395 being single-family lots with various size, different sizes of lots and different widths of those lots. We have reviewed this and have several comments, several of which have been addressed. Comments four and five have not, I'll come back to those. Those were some of the two biggest comments we had. Actually, five, four, five and six. We did, so I'll come back to those. Number seven, we did recommend, well, six and seven are actually, they're kind of related. Number six, I'll go ahead and hit six and seven. We had asked them to disperse the proposed parking throughout the site. They've done some of that. I think we, we think if we're going to have some parking that's, for guest parking, that sort of thing, we thought it could be, still be looked at some more with that. And we also asked for a two-car parking pad on each lot for all the townhomes, the single-family lots. They have not shown that at this time. We have talked with them and they are, I think they're going, we'll be taking another look at that for it as well. Number eight on Sheet C 3.0, we'd asked them to show the floodplain elevations location. They have done that, but by doing that, they have, it was pretty clear that some of the proposed lots will be, will be a cut and fill situation on that. And so they will have to submit that letter of map provision and all that as they go through the development process. Number nine was really just for informational purposes for them. It's just that they are, making sure they're planning on a 1,500 gallon per minute of fire flow.
Were you anticipating any issues with that because some of it's pretty steep?
I don't know at this point. I know Mark, there were some of the, some of the mains were showing a six-inch and we felt like they're probably going to have to have five or eight-inch mains to meet that. So we think, I think they're going to be okay. They might have to do a little bit different than what they initially planned. Number 10 and 11 have to do with the auto turn and they have, they do show the correct fire apparatus now and they've taken care of that issue. So I think we're okay on the fire truck access at this point. Number 12, they did provide ranges of house size by the different types of housing. That's also Sheet C 3.0. And so they're kind of varied depending on the lot size and the type of form we're talking about. Number 13, to indicate the materials to be utilized on the rear building elevations, they had shown the front and sides but not the rear. So they have addressed that as well and it is a mix of brick, stone and hardy. And it kind of depends on the different, again, there are three or four different types. They're all still a mix of those three uses or elevations materials. Number 14, they had shown kind of a, with the current zoning, kind of the max number of units. And that number really didn't take into account a realistic estimate because it didn't account for any roadways and stormwater and that sort of thing. That's been revised and taken care of, so it's a much more accurate number now. Number 15, there is a small cemetery near the southeastern corner of the property. It's actually a separate tract of land. It wasn't requested as a part of the rezoning. It's already in town. But I did ask them to show that. They indicated they had done that. I couldn't see it on the drawings. So there was, it's not a part of their development plan. It does, it's far enough away from it, it's not going to be an issue. But I did ask them to at least show that. And number 16, they did clarify that on one of the side setbacks, that there were seven and a half proposed. So if you want to go back to comments four and five, we had, go to, this shows the, it kind of overlays the development plan on the property. We had recommended that they move their main access. They kind of have two access points to Rock Springs Road proposed. Kind of that eastermost access is proposed as a collector. There is, we do on our major thoroughfare plan have a connection between Rock Springs Road and Lee Road in that area to provide another connection between those two streets. And so this would be a piece of that roadway and it would eventually get extended down to Lee Road. So that is, the location's good and we're, we think that's a good connection and good roadway layout there. But we recommended that they move the western access point to Waldron Road and look at a signalization of that. And so they have, at this point, they have not ended that to show that. Comment number five, we had a concern, the townhome portion of this proposed development as well as some of the other alley-loaded lots. The only frontage that they're proposing at all for any type of roadway frontage at all is an alleyway. And so I'm a little concerned about that from, for an emergency response standpoint. Coupled with the parking concern, if you only have a single-car garage and a single driveway and then if anybody parked on the street, it's only 18 feet wide, getting a fire truck or something through there could be a real concern of ours. We met with the developer yesterday afternoon and they are, they kind of understand a little bit more where we're coming from now on some of these issues. They do want you all to kind of react and discuss this request, but they have indicated they did request, are going to request that you defer this one month. Within that timeframe, they believe they'll have their traffic study completed, which we can, helps us with the proposed road improvements that we think need to be made. And then they can address these other issues with regards to the parking and other things too. So I did, we also did, because I know this was going to be something that we wanted to talk about, we did look at, just kind of on Rock Springs Road, the map that's on the screen there is approximately nine tenths of a mile on Rock Springs Road from where it's currently a three-lane road that narrows to two. It's about nine tenths of a mile till you get to Waldron Road. So that's the distance that we're talking about. And we don't have the impact study or anything at this point from them, but they're, we would be looking at some improvements to Rock Springs Road and we would have to. Part of this also, we are, at this point, we only have a draft back. It hasn't been finalized yet, but the town is doing a corridor study of Rock Springs Road and looking at long-term what we need to do, something similar to what we did with the Sam Ridley Corridor. And so the signalization of Waldron Road was, was certainly part of that study, the draft recommendations of that study. And we feel like it's, and also the other big part of that is making sure you don't over-connect through Rock Springs Road just from a traffic flow standpoint. And so I think still keep the two connections that they're proposing, just relocate one to the Waldron Road intersection would be our recommendation, so.
The other thing, you know, the traffic study is certainly big. We want to make sure that that's done while school's in session, since the holidays coming up.
I think they've already done their counts and all.
Okay.
So I think they have, they are, it's in process, it's just not done.
Okay, we certainly want to review as to when because with the school up the hill there, it's going to be, it is a busy intersection and will continue to be busier. Where is the Laverne City Limits in relationship?
The Laverne City Limits are basically the north right-of-way of Rock Springs Road right there.
Okay, so the bridge is in Laverne?
Yes. So obviously, anything like that, any improvements to that intersection, we're going to have to coordinate with the city of Laverne. There's no way around.
Technically, what do we have to say about, how does that work?
We don't, we're going to have a traffic study with... We don't, we're going to have a traffic study with some recommendations. And so, anything that recommends, you know, is Waldron Road, is there a need of a turn lane, those kind of things, it's really going to be up to them to enforce that. I mean, we really can't, we can't enforce something that's outside of our jurisdiction.
Absolutely.
And it's coming across a bridge.
And it's coming across a bridge. And this, that intersection is, I think the draft study, they told us yesterday, it's three or four years from needing signalization already without this development. So, I mean, it's definitely something that's based on projected growth. So it's definitely something that has to be thought about and done.
So five hundred units will somewhat advance that along, I would say. The, the homes, their building products are more in line with what we just asked the previous applicant to do. Is that correct? That's what I understood.
From elevation, exterior elevation, it's kind of a mix that, it's on sheet, like say C three point oh. The townhomes, we arranged at thirteen fifty to twenty-two fifty. The single-family is kind of three different ranges there, but the minimum is sixteen hundred up to about twenty-five hundred. Three different kind of ranges.
But vinyl is not a siding?
Right.
Okay.
Brickstone and hardy.
The, the townhomes, I guess we still have an issue with those as far as the alleys and?
The alleys and the parking part of it, so, and we, and we talked with them yesterday. I think they're going to work on that. In addition to the traffic part of this, they're going to be looking at that and other issues to tweak and change as well when they come back next month.
Where would you like to see them as far as where the alleyways go to?
Well, I, to me, because they're, they are proposing that those be public. All, all the roadways that they're showing are shown as public.
Even the alleyways are public?
Even the alleyways are proposed as public. You know, I think, you know, if an alleyway at eighteen feet wide is not as bad if you have a twenty-two or twenty-four foot wide road in front of it.
Front side, yeah.
That, that, you know, if there's an issue, fire truck is going to become, looking at that side anyways. My main concern is where the, the only access is via an alleyway, which is the town section and then some of the lots along that are shown kind of at a, at the Rock Springs Road in that darker red color there.
Do we have a separate right-of-way for alleyways other than, rather than public street?
We do not. You know, our, our minimum right-of-way in Smyrna is fifty feet with a twenty-two foot wide pavement width. That's really the minimum. So, so this is different than what we normally see, certainly. Now, we have had one development in Smyrna that's used alleyways, the Lennox Development. And they are very similar with the right-of-way and pavement too, so.
But they are, they're not public, are they?
Yes, sir, they are public.
They are?
Mm-hmm.
And what, what did we require there?
Well, it was approved the way it was submitted.
Which was?
It was public, which is a twenty, it was actually, I believe it was a twenty-foot pavement width. But, but it was public and, and the right-of-way wasn't fifty feet or anything like that, it was narrow.
But the pavement area was?
Was required, was approved at twenty feet. And there's been a lot of back and forth about those over the years internally with us, the town and developer, so.
Is the peak of the elevation of the whole subdivision two, is it not? That's kind of the highest point.
It is. Yeah, there's some significant total rapid changes on this property.
And I assume that's the reason for the open area between the townhomes and the single-family down below there?
Sure, yeah, it's very steep. But even, they're kind of trying to go around the hill some with some roadways, but you're still going to have some, some, pretty steep lots and, and roadways.
Kevin, this, this small question I had was about the pool parking. If there's five hundred or so homes that's going to be eventually built in here over the next, could be eight or ten years before we see anything done, is ten spaces enough for pool parking?
I think they've got about fifteen or so.
They've got nineteen allocated, but I'm just wondering if that's enough.
Yeah, they got nineteen total right there provided.
That's for playground and pool and?
Playground and pool.
Total, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, just a question, you see, you've got in here required parking for pool area, ten spaces. And then required parking for playground area, three spaces.
And then, and we do have some, and it's based on the size of the pool.
Okay, well, that was my, kind of my question, if it's not a big pool, it'll fill up pretty quick.
Yeah, and it's, and that was some of our, with that and with just the other, they do have quite a bit, kind of scattered around, some parking spaces. Some of them make sense where they're at and some of them just?
And is everybody now going to the cluster mailbox?
They would have, they'll have?
That's required now?
We would assume so. As a new development, the post office is probably going, and that probably end up with more than one with the development this size.
That was my next question, so.
That's really kind of what the post office is called.
Have you evaluated the open area and based on what the topos are that it's really usable?
I mean, pool and the playground area is shown, what's an area that's relatively flat and it is near the entrance to the development. And then they have some other area. There is a little bit more topo change there, but they're going to be having to do quite a bit of cut and fill in that area probably, so it probably could be flattened out enough that it makes it work. A lot of it is just going to be kind of passive area. If we get snow, there's going to be some great sledding it looks like, so. And of course, there's some existing ponds, are kind of leaving those as well and probably using them some as detention as well, but. A little hatch for, for some of the HOA.
You're pretty much okay with that, David?
Yeah, I'm okay with that part of it, yeah.
Based on what we see, what kind of specific guidance do you want to share tonight?
I was going to reiterate some things I already said, so I'll let you all talk.
Well, record me as not commenting and not voting.
Well, I think you've, to just reiterate what you were going to reiterate, I think the road for me is the big thing. With that amount of rooftops, we want to make sure that road improvement is somehow factored in. Where those cuts are, I guess the staff can work through that with the developer. I think Waldron Road's a smart place to put it. The, the rest of the development, I'm pretty comfortable with based on the comments that you've already addressed. So Regina brought up a question a little while ago about parking for townhome units especially. They've got double-wide parking shown in their comments here, correct?
Well, they have double wides on some of the units. Majority of them though, actually there are single car.
So, maybe that needs to be something that needs to be addressed as well because we've been doing a lot of that lately.
Right.
Trying to keep people off, off-street parking, in the driveways and so forth. But, other than that, I mean, I, I think it's a good concept and, and just from a safety perspective and a traffic perspective, that's my main concern.
And from the alleys, how, what is the setback of the units from that? How some of the parking comes off the alleys then, but?
Most likely the parking would be, yeah, parking's going to be off the alleys if you look at the elevations. There are, I think some of the townhomes would not necessarily be off the, would be, well, they will be off the alleyway, but it wouldn't be to the rear of the house necessarily. At some of the single families, there would be rear park, rear garage access. There, it's a twenty-foot setback on the front.
Bill, is that enough, especially since it's not a sidewalk, but it's going to be?
I think if you had enough for, if you had two, if it's two, you know, two spaces side by side, you would at least have two parking spots. You know, twenty feet's deep, no, I mean, a typical parking space is nine by nineteen. So, I mean, twenty feet will get you off the road. Especially if you don't have a sidewalk, if you don't have a sidewalk, you have to be looking at a sidewalk in that area, which I don't know if they are.
Do they have sidewalks that service these units that have the alley service?
The ones that do have, the ones that are going to have a, a street in front of them, yes. The alleyways are not going to have sidewalks. So the townhomes would not have sidewalk internally to the townhome part of the project.
But not all of them front a, a street, or they do?
The town, the, all of the townhomes are only going to front an alleyway.
And there's no sidewalks to service those townhomes?
There's no sidewalk proposed in the right-of-way itself in, of the alleyway. The others, everything else that's not an alleyway would have sidewalks on both sides, but within the alleyway.
The townhome section are serviced by eighteen-foot alleys and do not have sidewalks?
That's what's proposed, yeah.
How people supposed to move around?
Well, that was our concern too. Especially from, our, our primary concern on that was the emergency response and then the parking part of it, because there is parking in the street, it's going to make it difficult for vehicles, emergency responders, people riding their bike or walking. They're not going to be, they're going to have to be in the street, or in the alleyway, really.
So parking in the street on an eighteen-foot alley?
That was our concern with a single garage and a single parking space. The reason for our comment number six and seven.
Well, the one thing that we've done lately is looking at requiring two?
Double-wide parking.
Double-wide, which I think it's a very positive thing for us to look at. But I'm also concerned about, you know, just, or traffic flow, people moving around.
Backing in and out of one another, it's almost like an apartment parking space.
Maybe worse.
Maybe worse.
Than how sidewalks. I think that's something we'll look really hard at.
And I'll just add that, you know, from the concept as far as the mix, I like that. I like the elevations that I'm seeing, the amenities. And I'm kind of with these guys, if we can just kind of work on the alleyways, the double wides, certainly the Waldron Road connection, I think we're pretty close to getting there. And of course, you know, Rock Springs.
Any other questions? Officially, it's been withdrawn then?
No, actually, they actually, what they asked for was a deferral. So we, we would recommend you, you defer it.
All right. The request is then to, do, do we need action since they've requested that?
I, I would, I think it would be good if you just, just defer it to the next one.
I'll make a motion to defer it.
Kevin, I'll probably refrain.
We have a motion and a second to defer any other discussion. I'll in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose, pass four with two passes, or two, two extensions. Okay, moving on, underneath business, item B, preliminary flat, written commercial, staff comments.
This is a flat, you all have seen this a little over a year ago and did approve it. There's, they've, but they, their year was up, so they resubmitted. It's on Rock Springs Road, proposed as a mix of C four, there is some R one zoning on this property as well. There's four lots proposed at this time, all in the C four zoned part of the development. We had some standard comments and then we did have some staff comments. They are showing future connection of Addison Drive, which would be a bridge over the creek and would tie into the, the Johnstown subdivision development in the back. Eventually, they're not proposing building that at this time, they're proposing just leave that out. And so, when we, the answer to the question was in the future, if we want that to be built, there's no timeline on that. Number two, we did ask them, and this is not something that they would, could do at this point, but they would, would be, did add, or require them to provide approval from FEMA for the floodplain alterations because this is a cut and fill situation. So they would have to submit that approval from FEMA as part of the development process. Number three, to add a hydrant between lots two and three, and they've done that, so we can remove that comment. The comments, comment four was to show all the cut areas outside the sixty-foot buffer area, which is part of our stormwater ordinance, and they have, they've done that, so that one's been addressed. And then, we'd ask them to look at the future connection of Addison Road and how it associates with the Medical Park Road, which is under construction currently. And we asked them to line those up as possible. That road, the proposed Medical Park is west of this proposed Addison Road. It may not make, it may be difficult to make that connection on the south side where it's at because of the, where the creek is in relation to the road there and that sort of thing.
Well, then it's a distance enough, you know, if it doesn't?
We were worried about offsetting, yeah.
Yeah, if it's far enough away, if you, if you can't get it directly to it.
Center line to center line, that's just where it's proposed now, it's about two hundred and twenty feet is the offset there. I'd prefer to Tom on that part of it as far as it, but, anyway. They do show it on the, it's where Medical Park is proposed to tie in there to the west, so. Again, at this time, they're not proposing to build that, but it was actually a requirement of any development of this, the residential piece of the property that they own. The planning commission several, several years ago did require that that connection be made so it would, as another way in and out to Rock Springs Road instead of just using Spring Hill Drive for all of it, so.
Well, if we see issues with it, you know, button up to it, would you move it over to the side property line of lot four and move it further away then?
That certainly would, might be an option.
Because there's kind of a no-man's land between lot four and what they're talking about, the proposed right-of-way?
Well, I think the, I think proposed lot four, that, that boundary does butt up to this proposed road.
Oh, it does?
It does, yeah. There's a lot of lines with all the floodplain lines and cut and fill lines and all that, buffer lines. But there, the, the boundary of lot four does butt up to this proposed Addison Road, Addison Drive.
Okay.
And then, because then it's basically the road would then come in, the property, the town actually owns that little piece to the west there. We had thought that when we widened the road, so.
All right.
That is, that's as far west as they can go.
Yes.
Because the town owns the property next to it, so the alternative would be, you can move it to the east some, but then you also have the Cedar Grove Road connection there too, that's, which is probably the busier connection, but.
Is that something staff sees, still sees the need for?
Well, I mean, yeah, we'd like to make it line up, but to make it line up, the city would have to be a participant because we own the property to make it line up, so. And that may be something long-term that would be the best thing to do, would be for it to come across the city's property and cart it back over, you know? That might be something we want to think about. At this time, all they really want approval on is the four commercial lots, which if we do approve it this way, obviously, it's going to go where it's proposed on this drawing or across the city property because it can't really move further east once you, if you get, if you create the four commercial lots and those, you know, you're kind of creating those lots at that point, so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Enoch Gerald with Hudson Steel Engineering, Mr. Joe Carl wouldn't have been here tonight. Kevin's correct, Addison Drive was proposed with the Johnstown fifteen or so years ago to connect. And at that time, this property to the north, I'll call it the south of Rock Springs branch were two different property owners. Gateway Properties bought all of this seven or eight years ago and have been sitting on it. Their plan is to develop these four commercial lots, generate some income, which would allow them to build the road and the bridge to the other side and then to the south side of, of Rock Springs, outside the floodplain, they have some more properties zoned R3, that could probably be forty residential lots or something like that. So, so their plan is to sell the four commercial, generate some income to be able to do the bridge and the road and make that connection. As far as lining up with Medical Park, um, it, it's, it's a big S curve. Uh, today, the, the roads are, Kevin said, two hundred and twenty feet center to center. Subdivision regulations has a hundred and fifty-foot minimum, so it, it meets the subdivision regulations as far as the offset at the center line of the roads. Medical Park is, you know, from Rock Springs over to Cedar Grove, so it's not a collector's street, it's just really a minor, minor street. I don't know that they would be opposed to moving it, to line it up, other than it would probably lose lots unless it went through the floodplain, so. Um, I guess that's something we consider to a future date when they come in with the south side to develop. Uh, but like I said to Kevin Day, the, the main thing where they're looking for is to develop these four commercial lots, so they can generate some income off of those.
Y'all have questions of, uh, Mr. Gerald?
The only thing I noticed is the project name on these two big drawings is different than the project name on staff notes.
Well, we have a little eye missing.
I don't know which one's right, but they're different.
We'll go with what's on the drawing because this one is right.
Okay, what else we got? Do I have a motion?
Move to approve staff comments.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor to approve the staff comments, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Under new business, item C, final flats, legacy, section four, re-subdivision of lot twenty, staff comments.
This is a piece of property on the, at Lee Victory Parkway and Legacy Drive. This is one we looked at a couple months ago for zoning purposes, and, and we told them we needed to get the revised plat, and so, uh, they had submitted that now and proposed the site plans later on, on your agenda. Uh, this, uh, there was a final plat approved for five lots, uh, and dedicating a, a new street that was gonna be a public street and serve those five lots. And what this does is it takes away that public street, that, that plat was approved, but it has never been recorded. And so technically, it's all just one tract of land currently, and so what this does is it creates, uh, a commercial lot with two existing commercial buildings. And then all the remaining property is, is a part of the, the PRD. Um, it does dedicate all the necessary utility and drainage easements in that, those lots, and it creates the two new lots erected there. So it is two lots, ten point eight, two acres total. We had, uh, just really four comments, and, uh, comments one, three, and four have all been addressed. Comment two is regarding the owner's signature, which is, would happen prior to recording, so that's not an issue there. Guess that's all that I've got.
Any questions?
And it, we do want to remind everybody, just, they are removing the public right-of-way, but there is an act, they are replacing that with an access easement, so there would be access. Lot one twenty-three and one twenty would have a shared access easement from Legacy Drive to serve both, all the developments in there, so just to clarify that.
Alright, have a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a second.
I had a whole question.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Next item. Patent Retreat, phase two, staff comments.
This is, uh, phase two of Patent Retreat, it's off of Chicken Pike. Um, it is zoned R3, forty-four point one acres, ninety-nine lots. We had, uh, about, we had several comments, actually comments four through eight are, are from CUD. So we would have to, those, we, we kinda put them on our comments, but they're really, uh, just from CUD since they do provide the water service here. We had three comments, uh, comment number one, they are showing a certification from Milton Tensley Electric, that's not required by our, by our regulations. Um, they have indicated that Milton Tensley Electric, um, has a requirement to sign this because of the various easements that are crossing this property, so they do wanna keep that. It's not a, it's not an issue, I guess, that they have it, but it's not required by our ordinance to have it. Um, they do need to add the signatures for the owner and CUD prior to recording, and, uh, they have not shown the fire hydrants, this, uh, CUD actually plans those out in their service area, and so they have not indicated to them where those hydrants are gonna be yet, so they couldn't show them on the plat. So we will need that before it can be recorded, but they have not shown it at this time, so we would need to keep that as a comment. And then four through eight are from CUD regarding the water lines there, so.
Let's talk about number one.
Okay.
How do they require? On our plat?
I don't know if there's some sort of easement agreement within, between the property owner and them or something like that, uh, that requires it. It's certainly not something that, again, that our regs require, Milton Tensley Electric asked several years ago that we start requiring.
Yes.
And we.
Respectfully decline.
We, we declined that. Uh, and then there was some talk for a while there, they were gonna start doing their own flats, for a separate flat, just for their signature, and that went away, but, um, so, that, I don't know. I, I, I've brought it up to the developer's engineer two or three times, and they've always come back and said they are required to sign. Milton Tensley Electric is requiring it to sign, and I'll, I don't know. Actually, it looks like they may have stepped out, so I'm not, I don't know if their engineer was here, someone.
Well, I guess my question would be if they're required to, to do, to do it on this plat, then why can't they require it on every one of our plats?
The explanation to me was, and there are several easements for the electric, Milton Tensley Electric easements on, across this property, and my understanding is because of those easements. That's what their, what SEC is indicating to me, so. If it comes in without that signature, I'm, we're still gonna sign it, it's not gonna, I don't, I don't, we don't require it, so. If it comes to me without their signature, I can still sign it to record.
If it comes with it?
If it comes with it, it's, again, it's not a, it's not something we require, it's not gonna, I guess it's not gonna hurt anything for it to be there.
I'm not sure about that. Cause I think it's set in a press, have we ever had that on a plat before?
Not that I'm, can recall in my time here, no, sir.
So why wouldn't we start it today?
And again, the only thing I can, uh, I wish someone from SEC was here to answer that question, because they're the engineer on the project. I don't know if there's some sort of a deed of, or deed requirement or something like that, it's the only thing I can think of.
It's required, it, it, it is on anything outside of Spark County. If it's in the county, it's, it's, it's the.
They do sign in the county.
They do.
I understand that.
And it's required by their subregs as they require, and since other jurisdictions do want that, that's part of their plat, but we don't and never have, as far as I know, so.
So are you asking us to remove number one or leave number one?
Oh, our comment was to remove it.
To be consistent.
Right.
Jeff, what do you think?
I mean, we've stated clearly on the record, and we have nothing that says that we require such. I think it's up to this body of whether you wanna accept it, I, I don't see any problem, uh, that we've made that clear, it's not required if it is on there. But obviously, this board has the prerogative to, if you don't wanna have it on there because you feel that it isn't consistent.
Well, I don't understand how other people can require what we do or do not put on our plats.
Correct, I'm just stating that this is an extra signature, and if you choose to do that, I think that we're fine. If you choose not to do that, I think that we're fine with this, this piece, cause we've not required it.
I don't recall that they signed phase one.
Pardon?
I, I, that, they weren't on phase one of this development.
This is not being on anything that we have approved.
They, they weren't on, and in phase ones recorded, they're building houses, they didn't, there was no signature for them on that plat.
I can't make a motion, but my preference is that number one stays on there. Unless we want to totally change what we've been doing. Do I have a motion?
I'm fine with leaving the comment on there to be removed as well, it's a consistency thing for me. If we've not done it in the past, I, I don't see why we'd start it now, so. I make the motion to approve the staff comments.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye. Propose? Motion carried. Moving on to item D, site plans, the legacy townhomes.
This is a proposed site plan for Legacy Luxury Townhomes, which is seeded on approximately eight point five one acres, located at the corner of Legacy Court and Lee Victory Parkway. Property is currently zoned PRD and proposed uses for fifty-two multifamily residential townhomes, which is allowed by right in this PRD zoning district. Property is bound to the south by existing townhomes, to the west by single-family residential lots, to the north by Stewart Creek, and to the east by Lee Victory Parkway. Surrounding zoning consists of C2, R3, and R6. As proposed, the site may be accessed from Legacy Court. Currently, they are exceeding the required amount of square footage of landscaping as required for this development. The landscape plans that were submitted by the applicant show a landscape buffer along the north and western property lines, which join the residential districts, and the, there is additional buffer between the proposed townhomes and the existing liquor store to the south. Street trees are proposed to be planted throughout this development as well. The architectural elevations that were submitted for this project are, are the same as what they submitted during the rezoning process going to the PRD. Uh, they are also required to have, show a mix of brick, stone, and/or cement fiber siding on all sides of the townhomes. Proposed site is partly located within the floodplain, um, and the floodway as well, but no development is occurring within the floodway. We have four standard comments and four staff comments. Staff comments two through four have all been addressed, so all we have is staff comment one regarding the, uh, E nine, E nine one one approval for the new street names. Um, other than that, staff would recommend approval with comments.
Questions or comments?
Council, two council members at least may remember at the public hearing, we had a lot of discussions regarding the joining residential areas, the single-family areas regarding fencing, and they are showing the proposed fence. It's a kind of retaining wall, and, and they're gonna start from there and go that entire length on that side of budding those three residential homes that are there, so they are, they did address that, and I did, that, one of the folks that came and spoke at the public hearing, I talked with him and explained to him what they're proposing, cause he had called me. And, uh, he was, he was happy to hear that, and he was okay, so it was always proposed.
Very good, have a motion.
Move to approve the staff comments.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Alright, uh, number two, Leonard Claude Jones property, lot nineteen, staff comments.
This is a proposed site plan for Leonard Claude Jones property, lot nineteen, approximately four point eight acres and located at three one one Q Creek Circle. Property is currently zoned C2 and the proposed use is for a office warehouse building, which is allowed by right in the C2 zoning district. The proposed building is to be four thousand three hundred and seventy square feet in size. The property is bound to the north by an office building, to the east by a vacant lot, to the south by a medical office building, and to the west by Q Creek Circle. Surrounding zoning consists of C2, as proposed, the site may be accessed from Q Creek Circle. As far as landscaping is concerned, the landscape plan shows street trees along Q Creek Circle with additional shrubs and trees planted along the north and south property lines as well. Architecture elevations submitted by the applicant show brick with a split-face block accent, and the rear elevations will also have three roll-up doors. Other than that, we have a couple standard comments and no staff comments, but staff would recommend approval with those comments.
Questions? Have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments?
Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Propose? Motion carried. Item number three, antique Rocky Fork Road, Amifor Road.
Yes, sir. This is a proposed site plan for Antique Communications Tower, which is positioned on approximately fifteen point three acres, located at seventy-eight oh eight Rocky Fork Goldenville Road. Property is currently zoned R3 and proposed uses for a hundred and eighty-foot tall communications tower, which is allowed by right in R3 zoning districts. Surrounding zoning consists of R3 and the. Surrounding zoning consists of R3 and the PRD, development of Amherst. As proposed, the site may be accessed from an access and utility easement across the parent parcel from Rocky Fork Oldenville Road. Landscape plan has not been submitted by the applicant. The ordinance does require evergreens to be planted around the fence of the tower to, and to screen the tower completely within a two-year period. So we have two standard comments to go with the tower, and then a couple staff comments as well. As far as staff comment, one is concerned about the driveway entrance being asphalt or concrete. The ordinance requires that. However, this particular parcel that the tower is to be positioned on is part of a larger development. The owner, or co-owner of this lot, and then owner of the surrounding parcels, plans on bringing forth a subdivision in the near future. So requiring a pavement of that access road would jeopardize some of the potential lots to be placed and, in that area. So that is regarding the first comment. The second comment, the PRD zoning ordinance, communication towers adjacent to the residential districts shall be screened with landscape buffer, as I mentioned previously. So we would recommend keeping that comment, but waiving the requirement of the pavement for the access road to that site. And that is it.
Do we have any kind of plan to show what their access would be? We don't require that.
I believe that it's currently there, it's just not paved. The ordinance requires it to be paved, but it's currently not paved at this time.
But the reason they don't want to pave it is because they're going to be subdividing the property.
Correct.
Have we seen a master plan or preliminary?
I was shown a, just a concept plan of what they plan to be bringing forward. It's not.
But it hadn't been completed.
Completely, it's not completely done yet, so.
No.
But it did propose for a road to be nearby where the tower is, and it was under the assumption that at that time, after the subdivision was built, that, that access off of the street through that subdivision would be the new access to that tower, replacing this off of Rocky Fork Oldenville.
So how do we make sure that happens?
They would have, when they built, I'm assuming, and I'm asking a question, they're showing an easement to get there now. So they wouldn't pave it, they'd just have access to it, it would be an easement. Then when they come in to do their development, they would actually assign a hard road and abandon that easement. Would that be correct?
Yeah, that's what's proposed to be done.
What's the length from Rocky Four to this?
Pretty good distance.
It's quite a ways. Let's see the scale.
Looks like a couple thousand feet.
It, it's quite, it's, there's a, the parcel boundary, this driveway basically is the part, the, the part, only part of this parcel that touches Rocky Fork Oldenville Road. It's a long, narrow piece of property that accesses the acreage where the tower is supposed to be located. It's just a gravel driveway that goes back to, there is a house on the property, it goes back to that house. The developers, the owner of the property is also talking, he may want to relocate even that existing driveway to a different location, but temporarily. But we have seen, they have a concept plan that they are working on, and we anticipate you will, will be seeing it next month or two months. Thirty feet.
So it is a thirty-foot wide easement?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's thirty, it looks like it's thirty part of the way, and then it's forty the rest of the way. If you look at sheet four or five, it's thirty feet till you get, till it.
I think it's thirty feet where it's, that's probably how wide the property owner owns. Yeah, once it gets onto their property, they do widen it to forty.
The first leg of it's fifty, almost sixteen hundred feet. Before it gets to where it goes from thirty to forty, and then it widens after that. About two hundred and fifty feet, so it's almost nineteen hundred feet long from the road back there.
The issue's being consistent with what we've always required. What kind of problems does it create if it's not paved?
I mean, the only people that are going to be using it are the, the tower owners when they build it. I mean, that's really, and the occasional maintenance truck coming back there. It's not, and then the people that are living, if anyone's still living in the house, I mean, they'll obviously continue to use it. I guess for us, as a temporary situation, since it's, we're anticipating there's going to be a road, roads and subdivision lots built in this area.
Can they bond it, not build it, and then when the other comes, comes in, we?
We could, that could be something if you wanted, that, that's an option, certainly.
I guess that's where I was headed, is that we, we've required it everywhere, and I, I get that, you know, this is going to develop out, and it may not be fully defined where this is going to be at, but I don't know that you can just take a, just say, you know, a gravel, and then when it builds out, maybe it happens, maybe it doesn't happen.
But I think, I think we could do it with a bond and allow them to maintain their gravel drive, and then we release it when it goes away.
When they, when they build the subdivision and build a, pave that road, yeah.
That way, we still are consistent.
Or they could pave it. They could go ahead and pave it, but they didn't want to do that, and that would be the other option. Getting a little bond, they could.
We don't necessarily want to require them to do that, but if it doesn't get built, yes, we feel like we have to, because that's our regs.
Right.
If we approve it, requiring it, then staff is allowed to do a bond.
Sure.
And it not be built for a while.
Right.
That's just your normal course of business, I think, isn't it?
Right. So I mean, that, that would be the, the way to approve it, if you want to do it that way. That's fine with us. We were just, from a practical standpoint, that's a lot of asphalt that may be torn up in a year, and so we.
And I don't think we care if it takes a year, or if it takes two years, but I do care if it's done.
It makes our regs.
And it makes our regs.
Right.
That comes with the annexation.
Right, and the, the last, the lease, the lessor on this changed and requested annexation, so the leasing is having to do with that now, so. Because it was, residential lease was with the different, four properties sold, so there's been some changes there, including being annexed into the town.
Are you okay with that?
I'm okay with that, yeah. I think that'll, that'll still accomplish what they're wanting to accomplish. Which means they'll have to put up a bond.
You all okay with that?
I won't be voting or discussing.
Okay. So, do I have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
To include.
To include this. Go ahead.
Excuse me, sir. Hunter Stewart, two two nine Work Park Lane, Franklin, representing the developer. Just a question here, are you talking in reference to paving the concrete apron for the entrance? I think that was staff's comments, or is this paving the entire length of the access road?
The access road.
The regs require the entire road.
Okay, sir, I'm sorry, I just, I just didn't quite understand that, so.
Yes, sir.
So paved the entire driveway.
So we're, we're working out a compromise.
Yes, sir, I understand. I just, I couldn't quite hear if that was just the apron or the entire length, so I just wanted to make sure. Thank you.
All right. We've got a motion. Do we have a second?
That includes the requirement of the bond. Yeah, I'll second it.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Site plans, item number four, City Switch Telecommunications. Staff comments?
This is another proposed site plan for a communications tower by City Switch. It's positioned on approximately two thousand eight hundred and eighty acres and located near Nissan Gate Nine. Property is currently zoned I3, and the proposed use is for a hundred and fifty-foot tall communications tower, which is allowed by rights in the I3 zoning district. This project received approval from the Board of Zoning Appeals in October for a setback variance of fifty-seven feet six inches to install the tower in their location that is planned. Equipment boxes also received a setback variance of forty-seven feet to be installed as close as three feet to the property lines. Surrounding zoning consists of R5 and I3. As proposed, the site may be accessed from an access easement off Enan Springs Road East. Landscape plan was submitted by the applicant, we did receive that, and it shows nine evergreen trees buffering between the current residential district behind it. And these trees must grow to at least two, must grow to at least the height of the fence within a two-year period. Couple standard comments, they did address comment four regarding landscaping, but staff would recommend approval with these comments.
Have a motion?
Motion to approve with staff comments.
Have a second. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. December bond review.
Yeah, we've got three. First one is for the Ryan Smith Properties on Old Nashville Highway. It's a small bond to cover a small sewer line extension. They have, so certainly one lot that wasn't covered, and so they do need to extend that sewer line. They have not done that at this time, so they did request an extension on that. Mill Springs, this was kind of, it's at the end of the maintenance period on this one. We did have a few items, and I did talk with that developer, and they are ready to get these items finished, and, and their, their plan is to finish those items and request the release of that bond. We would recommend release if all those, there's about eight items there, do get completed. If, if it doesn't, we would, we would, might need to extend it a bit, but we would then release it once they got those, everything's done. And then Lennox, Phase One, Section One. Then again, this one, basically, we, we have received those asbills, we did verify that, so we've got that now. And so this is at the end of the maintenance period, and so we would recommend release on it.
We had seventy-five thousand dollar maintenance bond?
That was a very large bond to begin with, and then also, part of that was, they had to, because of the, those last buildings are building on the left as you go in, they actually had to tear up part of their street for sewer lines, and there were some other things in there too.
That's just a really big thing.
It is. That was about a two or three hundred thousand dollar one to begin with.
Do I have a motion on the bond?
Move to approve.
Have a second.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carried. Staff comments, other business?
One other thing, we just, I sent an email last week, and just to remind you, we are getting the steering committee on the comp plan together next Thursday night at six. We have received the draft land use plan with that, and so we will be getting that to you tomorrow through your Dropbox, so you have to look at before next week. So just wanted to remind you, everybody, of that.
Okay.
That'll be, of course, council will be invited, as well as the few, the other folks that are on the steering committee as well, so.
Any other discussion? Any other business? We stand adjourned. Thank you all.